Go ahead.
Call to order the January 11th, 2022 regularly scheduled meeting of the Johnson City Regional Planning Commission. Welcome everybody here and welcome to 2022. Commissioner Whitfield, would you lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, please?
I will. As we gather here today as members of our city, we pray that we be challenged to do our very best for all citizens in our community. May we focus our time and energy on the areas that we can improve and not be distracted by the areas that we cannot. And may we keep our focus steadfast on making this the best city we can for all of our current and future members. Amen.
Please rise.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ben.
You're welcome. And go dogs.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Well, we have an agenda before us this evening. Do we have any adjustments or changes to the agenda? Mr. Ryder.
Yeah, I'd like to add an item to the agenda. The villas at Nob Creek Phase Two Final Plat.
Okay, so we'll put that at the end, under new business?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, we've got the minutes have been distributed by our friend Ms. Lawrence. Are there any corrections or modifications to the minutes that have been submitted?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Stain, I was not present.
Thank you. All right, I think that takes us directly into old business. Ms. Warren, I think you've got the first topic up.
Good evening, Commissioners. I know I feel like a broken record saying this, but the applicant is requesting deferral. Hopefully this time this is the last deferral request, but they are asking for one more deferral from you guys.
Are we under any time restrictions with the deferrals or it's up to them?
It's up to them.
Okay.
And have we heard anything from T.D.?
I'm not sure exactly the degree of the conversations that have been had, but as far as I know, Mr. Berry is in active conversation with them.
Okay, so the applicant's the one requesting the deferral?
Correct.
Did we ever send a letter?
Yes.
Yes.
So do we need to make a motion?
Yes. I'll make a motion. Help you defer this to next month?
Next meeting.
Our second.
Second. Any discussion about a deferral till the February meeting? Most of the Commissioners? Nicole, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Aldridge.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Brock.
Yes.
Commissioner Pavlich.
Yes.
Commissioner Rhodey.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Whitfield.
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart.
Yes.
Motion to defer approved.
Thank you very much. Okay, the first item for new business, I'm gonna guess that's Mr. Ryder's gonna present. Is that correct? Thank you.
I'm impressed that someone her age knew what a broken record was.
That's funny.
Good observation.
That's a good one, Will.
This is a good evening, Chairman Dagenhart, Vice Chairman Whitfield, Commissioners. This is preliminary plat approval for the Madison Way subdivision, which is located past the existing stub on Red Cindy Road or Red Cindy Avenue, as I've been corrected, and they have been as well by our ever-watching GRS department. This is a five-lot subdivision for future residential development totaling 2.69 acres. There'll also be, this is preliminary plat approval, there'll also be a road dedication that will come through on the final plat of extending Red Cindy Avenue approximately 170 feet. There is a control strip on a previous plat. There's a five-foot control strip that they also need to receive permission from the Planning Commission tonight to be able to cross, to be able to. It's zoned R2A. There's no rezoning tonight, just developing under the existing zoning. It's zoned R2A, which is 12,000 square foot lots, 80 feet width, front building line. Setbacks pretty standard for residential, front 20 feet, 25 feet for front-facing garage, 10 on the sides and 30 in the rear. And of course, the subdivision regulations require 50 feet of frontage. These lots, these proposed lots meet all of these requirements. There is a variance request associated with this plat. There's a lot of, sometimes it's kind of hard to explain these things in the packet. I'm not sure that if I explained it in a concise manner, but that's why we have these presentations, and I think it'll make a lot more sense if my words and the staff report did not. And likewise, these words here on this slide probably don't make as much sense as the pictures that we'll go to next will, but the variance request is to eliminate the required sidewalk on the left side of the road, which I'll highlight in a moment, extend the existing sidewalk on the right side of the road. And the rationale is, I'll go ahead, go to the picture. This is Green Line Road here. As you can see, there's an existing sidewalk here. There's no existing sidewalk on this side of Green Line Road. What the road cross-section would require would be a sidewalk built from here to here and from here to here. It seemed to staff that it made more sense to extend the existing sidewalk here. We have the right of way to do so, already existing, to extend the sidewalk from here all the way down to the property line adjoining Lots One and Lot Two of the development. So the various request is simply that, to accept, to approve a modified local street cross-section with a sidewalk on one side of the road. And it just makes sense to extend this sidewalk instead of having a small section sidewalk to a sidewalk when there is no existing sidewalk on the other street.
Mr. Ryder, will the variance have to go to the BZA or can we handle that?
No, ma'am. The subdivision regulations, Planning Commission grants variances to the, if it was a zoning code issue, then the BZA would hear this case.
Thank you.
The staff recommends that to grant approval of the Madison Way subdivision preliminary plat, approve the modified local residential street profile variance request, and grant permission to the property owners to cross the control strip at the end of Red Cindy Avenue.
All right, any questions of staff?
Can that all be done in one motion?
Yes.
I'll open the floor for anyone here from the public that would like to speak in favor or against this proposal. Anybody here, please, if you'd come forward, and if you'd please give your name and address for the record?
My name's Ben Berry. I'm a Johnson City resident, live at Seven Strawflower Place, and one of the developers of this project, along with Greg Cox and Grant Summers. And I guess I'd first start off by saying I'm a city resident, I'm a builder, and proud of, I've looked through the bridge plan and really, and for the infill of Johnson City. I know that a lot of the developers have been focusing on outside of Johnson City, and I'd like to make it a lot more common to do projects like this, for projects that I can be proud of and the city can be proud of, as well as the fact that all my kids have gone to Town Acres and I still actually have one at Town Acres. So it's something that is near and dear to my heart by way of, it's something that I drive by regularly, and so again, I want it to be something that the neighbors are proud of and that we're proud of as well. Two requests that I have are, A, and I don't know that it needs to be a formal request, but an actual name change. The current address, street address name is Red Cindy. There are no houses, homes that have that address on that street, and so there shouldn't be much of an issue by way of changing it. The concept to that is honestly to make it consistent with Town Acres. Town Acres has been named, most of the street names are names of family members, and the request is that this is renamed after a family member. It's actually named after my oldest daughter, which is again, consistent with Town Acres. So we feel like that's a pretty reasonable request. The second request is, and as Mr. Ryder went through the sidewalk request, there is a sidewalk that goes up the hill, if you remember years ago, and it might be, might make sense to go back to the other picture.
The overhead satellite, please. Thank you, Will.
I remember when it was a big deal with the development that happened right behind Town Acres, and if you remember, there's, the city approved and Town Acres agreed to block the road because the residents of Town Acres didn't want that to be, Green Line to be a cut-through thoroughfare. Makes total sense, and I understand that. My, our viewpoint as the developers are is that that sidewalk is rarely used, and the remainder of Town Acres does not have sidewalks. I walked up and down Green Line, that's McGregor that cuts down there at the bottom right-hand corner. None of the other streets in Town Acres have sidewalks. I would also add that Town Acres is a kid-friendly neighborhood and obviously, and so safety is accomplished currently without sidewalks in that neighborhood. We feel like it is challenging, if, you know, obviously our development will be in the bottom left-hand corner, and it becomes troublesome to cross our back neighbor's driveway there as well as go through his yard to add a sidewalk. And, you know, our cul-de-sac, if you look to the left, isn't gonna be, start much further past where his property ends. And so our request is actually to avoid sidewalks altogether because we don't necessarily know that they're going to significantly, it's not a safety issue, and as we've been out there and walked the property, I realize that the sidewalks in the city, there are places within the city that I highly support sidewalks, not only the addition of sidewalks as well as refurbishing sidewalks for safety downtown and otherwise where there's a lot of thoroughfares of folks walking around. And so it's really more, in our position, it's more of an aesthetic thing than it is a safety or a money thing. We feel like that it actually detracts from the neighborhood. Town Acres is a great neighborhood, and we love being a part of it, and we're excited to do that. But again, our requests are two. One is to formally name change to Madison Way and to actually request to not have any sidewalks. We will continue the curbs we're doing, I mean, the curbs per the development plan, but to request that there would not be a sidewalk.
Thank you, Mr. Berry.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else here to speak toward the issue?
I wanted to ask a gentleman, are you gonna do the in-lug payment for the sidewalks to the city?
Could you come back to the podium, please? Thank you.
That hasn't been discussed. We're willing to, to consider it. It's not, again, for our stance, it's more of an aesthetic thing that we've got a cul-de-sac, obviously on our side, the sidewalk will stop. And on the property side, where the homeowner, our backdoor neighbor is, if we stop at that property, and I guess the city continues on the sidewalk all the way up, I guess that's the city's, you can, you're allowed to do that. My opinion is, there's probably a better use for money in the city. There's, I walk in downtown quite a bit. There's quite a few places where funds could be used downtown where there's actually quite a few foot traffic.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about keeping things equal for other developers.
Okay. All right, all right, other questions? Anyone else before I close the floor?
So, so your request is to no sidewalks, period. Is that correct?
Correct.
Even on the cul-de-sac?
Even on the cul-de-sac.
Your portion. At this point, there's not even, we're not planning on doing sidewalks, even per the staff's plan. There are no sidewalks on the cul-de-sac at all. The circle, that circled area right there on the development plan is the recommendation.
So your subdivision actually, or your addition actually starts to the property line left of that house on the lower left. Can you point to where the development will start?
All right, what do I point with?
Use the mouse. Yeah.
Will, help him.
Will.
Look on the screen. Yeah.
So it starts there, right?
So the sidewalk proposal, basically it starts right here and it works its way up to this corner there.
So you would have to connect, even though that's not part of your development, the city's asking you to connect that to that yard?
Right, I mean, I don't know the, I don't know the standard to that. That is not our property.
So it's not your property, but, so they can't really ask you to build a sidewalk on someone else's property, is that correct? Is that correct, Will?
No, it's not correct.
Sorry, Ben.
The, first off, with the fee and loo requirements, the fee and loo requirement, this is all a subdivision issue as far as the sidewalk's concerned. The fee and loo option comes in with the zoning, with the zoning code. In the zoning code, sidewalks are triggered when people come in to develop commercial properties, those sorts of things. They're not going through an active subdivision, but they're building a new principal building, building a new accessory structure in some cases, then that will trigger a sidewalk requirement to build a sidewalk in that portion, in the public right-of-way in front of that development. All right, so that's, that's not, if that makes sense. Let's say you're building a new Kroger or something, and they developed the Kroger, the subdivision, or the zoning code requires you to build a sidewalk, whether there are connecting sidewalks or not, on your, on your property line in the right-of-way adjoining public right-of-way. If they would rather not build that sidewalk, and if they meet all of the requirements for fee and loo, then they can pay a fee based off of an estimate provided by Public Works to not build the sidewalk. But this is, this is being triggered not by that, but by the road cross-sections in the subdivision regulations. So with that in mind, this is all, this is all city right-of-way here, this area right here. This is not this person's private property, and when they, when they develop this road and dedicate the road, this will be public, this will be public right-of-way as well. So.
Mr. Ryder, what about the other side of the street?
The other side of the street would be.
Were you required to put a sidewalk there as well?
Would be the same. So what the subdivision regulations would require now would be to do a five-foot sidewalk on both sides of the street, whether it makes sense or not, whether or not there are other existing sidewalks, that's the requirement. There's, there are, there's, there's nothing that says, it may seem unlikely, it might be unlikely, and it might never happen. There is nothing out there that says that sidewalks won't be built all along Green Line and all along this road over here. It's possible that it could happen, which is why the subdivision regulations require the developer to build sidewalks when they do an active subdivision on the properties adjoining, typically adjoining their property, which would be here. So the developer is sending a variance request to do no sidewalks, period. Well, and I get the argument, there's not an existing, there's not an existing sidewalk here. Doesn't mean that there won't be one day. There's just none now. There's, but there is an existing sidewalk here. So the comment, the feedback that we, I talked with the director, Mr. Mitchell, talked with Public Works, and what we decided upon that we would, to, now, you all can grant variances. You all can, you all can grant variances to the subdivision regulations, but staff usually recommends approval or denial of those variance requests. We sent back in our comments that we would be in favor of a variance request, keeping in mind the common sense approach that, yes, this, we would have two short sidewalks here and a short sidewalk, you know, one here and one here, but there is an existing sidewalk here, and it just seemed to make sense to flip it and have, not require it here and extend this sidewalk in the public right-of-way into the development.
Mr. Ryder, could you explain the subdivision regulations if, so the Stubbsden Street is a city street, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so the developer is going to just extend the street and make really a cul-de-sac and build five homes?
Yes.
So explain the regulations to me that says, okay, now the developer is responsible for the city street to add sidewalks?
They're going to, they're going to, they intend to build the public street, dedicate or extend this public street, dedicate the street, and when you extend the street per our subdivision regulations, this is the way the street's supposed to be built. It has to be built, if we're going to, if we're going to accept the street, they're gonna dedicate it to us and we're going to accept it, then it needs to be built to the city standards. And the city standards are determined in the subdivision regulations.
That would just be the portion of the cul-de-sac, is that correct, or now they have responsibility for the Stubbs?
Our Public Works Department doesn't typically require the sidewalks along the cul-de-sac. They wouldn't be required to build it. And this isn't really a typical cul-de-sac either. This is more, this is more of a linear, it's not a bulb-out, but there are, there is this portion of the street here before you get into the cul-de-sac, from here to here, where we would require, we would require the sidewalks to be built.
Now, if I've said anything out of turn, feel free to collaborate on street standards.
Let me see if there's any other public comment before we go forward. Anyone else here?
Can I, can I ask Kim a question?
Yeah, just a moment, please. I'm gonna close the floor for public comments so we can go ahead and continue this conversation.
Within our regulations of streets, roads, private drives, would one of those be more applicable for this particular project than a common street? The reason why I ask is, well, it's only gonna be five houses, and I know that we've made some changes before to consider it a semi-private drive to where its sidewalks aren't really necessary. The reason why I ask is, again, we don't know what's gonna happen in the future, but we do know that as we look at infill, the character of the neighborhood that it's going to be infilling is, would be in line with what's existing there today of not having sidewalks. So is there, is there some other option in terms of a public street?
I believe this, and I can let Public Works speak to this as well and get their insight, but I believe this is the street profile that's best suited for this neighborhood. And as far as a sidewalk, whether the city comp plan, I mean, there's, it's pedestrian traffic is highly encouraged, and this is, this is a chance to connect a sidewalk, a development, to an existing sidewalk, which takes you into a major commercial area where people could possibly walk and shop and that sort of thing. Now, as far as whether or not, I would think that that'd be more of a Public Works question if they think that there would be a better street file, profile for this particular, for this particular plan. But I would think that this is the one that makes the most sense. And just two other points, this is, this is, this is not, I mean, we recommended this route for a variance, but this is not our plan. This is the developer's preliminary plat, which they sent in for us to review. And then the second thing is, is to the best of my knowledge, the, there's a moratorium on renaming streets.
Where's that come, based on?
I believe the Board of Commissioners had a moratorium a couple of years ago, is my understanding. If that's not the case, then.
I need to check into that. I've never recalled voting on anything like that.
But if that's not the case, then that's something that could be taken up again at the final plating of the property with the.
I know the moratorium was on naming parts and buildings on all member streets, but that's for another conversation.
Yeah.
All right.
If that's not the case, and if I've said anything in error, then we can continue the road naming.
I don't recall it, but that doesn't mean anything.
We can continue the road naming conversation at the final plat stage.
You made very good points.
Thank you.
Now, is the recommendation to approve the variance?
The recommendation is to, the recommendation is to approve the preliminary plat that we received, which is, which, which shows a connection from the side from here to here. And if there is a, to have a wall legally, the process for a variance, you mentioned the BZA earlier, the process for a variance and what can be granted by the BZA is a very legal process that where you have to show a tremendous amount of proof, demonstrating a hardship, that's not a financial hardship, to be able to get granted a variance based on the shape, terrain, shallowness, depth of a particular lot, something tied to the lot itself. So to, likewise with the subdivision regulations, the developer, there must be a hardship that has, that's.
Meets that criteria.
That meets that criteria. I don't believe that there is one, but that's for you all to decide.
And Mr. Ryder, sorry, Jamie.
Go ahead.
The Green Line Road, and so the proposed sidewalk on Red Cindy would connect to Green Line Road. Now, Green Line Road is, there is a stop there, right? There's a, did you mention that the street has been blocked off?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, has the street been blocked off?
The street is, the street's not been blocked off? You may be thinking, are you thinking about when I was referring to the control strip? Oh, oh, right here, yes, yes, yes. This was, this was done years and years and years ago to stop traffic connecting from Green Line to the People's Street Development, basically. But the sidewalk continues.
That was my question, but the sidewalk continues?
Yes, you can see the sidewalk right here.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And if, and if I could. With any variance request, where any provision of these regulations would cause unnecessary hardship or because of topographical or other conditions peculiar to the site, which in the opinion of the city engineer would restrict the public interest, health, safety, or welfare, the subdivision shall show to the satisfaction of the city engineer the basis for which the variance is required. Work with the city engineer to develop applicable standards for design which would accomplish the intent of these regulations. If no agreement can be reached, then each shall submit the disagreement to the Planning Commission and present such variances along with written jurisdiction to the Planning Commission, which will determine whether the variance will destroy the intent of these regulations. Authorization of any variance shall be placed in the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting with the reasoning upon which the variance was granted. So unless a variance request, now we've, we've applied some common sense here. The subdivision regulations require sidewalks. We've tried to exercise common sense and recommend how to build the sidewalks, a sidewalk in a manner that would be meaningful, potentially meaningful to the community. And then the, but to eliminate a sidewalk altogether and to, to request a variance, to have a variance granted that would just eliminate, that really does not. have a variance granted that would just eliminate that really does not, in my opinion, meet the terms of what a hardship would be based on any of these conditions, which I just read in the sub regs.
Okay, other questions or discussion amongst the commission?
I do have another question, Mr. Ryder. Let's go back up to I want to make sure I understand this correctly. So this is for my understanding. No, back where you were. Yeah. So the red oval circle there from the point down here entering the cul-de-sac up to the corner where it would connect with the already existing sidewalk, that that is what is going to be a requirement. Does that also apply across the street?
No, because we're basically taking length that would be here. And since this sidewalk, we would require a sidewalk by the sub regs, we would require a section of sidewalk to be built from here to here and from here to here. But as the developer pointed out, there is no existing sidewalk, as you can see over here, there's no sidewalk that goes along or here. Doesn't mean that there couldn't be one day sidewalks may may be built. But since there is an existing sidewalk over here, we propose to the developer, hey, for us to support a variance request, what if you took section of sidewalk over here and attached it to Green Line Drive and just and continued the sidewalk up to the development? Did whoa, did that?
No.
Should I explain? Did that make any sense?
So in other words, okay, I'm coming out of the cul-de-sac to the right, all the way up to what's the name of that street?
Green Line.
Green.
Green Line.
No, that's Green Line.
Green Line's here and this is Red Cindy.
Okay, all right. So all the way up to Green Line on the right side of the street, you don't have to have anything. There is no sidewalk.
That's correct.
And you're saying because there wasn't a sidewalk on Green Line to connect to that kind of helped you make your decision there?
Yeah, if the if the planning commission does not want to grant a variance, then we would we would we would simply say, because I don't believe that the burden of a hardship based on the terrain has is is non-existent in staff's opinion, then if a grant of variance is not to be granted, then what we would suggest, whether it seems to make sense or not, is that the sidewalk be built from here to here and from here to here on this side of the street. That's that's if no variance is is approved, that's that's the way that that section of street is supposed to be built. If but since we have an there is an existing sidewalk over here, we we felt that we would support a variance request if it tied if it if it actually took what was required over here and put it over here and extend it to the development.
Makes perfect sense. It really does. From my understanding, what triggers the the use of the sidewalk is an improvement to a piece of property, is that correct?
In and act and.
I'm not going to try.
No, 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 an act of subdivision, an act of subdivision with a with a with a proposed road would triggers the sidewalk.
So here we have an existing stub.
Correct.
Within that piece of property on the corner lot that does not have a sidewalk in front of it, how is it the developer's responsibility to connect from where his proposed subdivision is to that sidewalk? Why is it his responsibility then?
It's it's the subdivision, it's the.
But he's not touching that piece of property.
It's the developer's responsibility to build the sidewalk.
In front of the improved property.
In front of in front of the in front of the property he's subdividing.
But he's not subdividing that piece of property.
Then if you're uncomfortable with the variance request, I would recommend that you that the developer build sidewalks abutting his property on this side of the street and on this side of the street. And perhaps one day a connection would be made. In fact, Mr. McCullough could probably speak to this. If we if if the subdivision regulations are followed without the granting of variance, it is his responsibility to connect the side to build a sidewalk here and to build a sidewalk here. And he it it may just be that Public Works would think that if that's the case, then Public Works may actually go connect this sidewalk here.
Mr. Ryder, I agree. The challenge, the other challenge I have with it is if that is the case where it should be built on both sides of the street, then why isn't there a sidewalk opposite of Green Line Road where the existing sidewalk is?
I I can't speak to.
Exactly.
What they did.
Again, it makes no rhyme or reason, but it common sense tells you, well, you probably don't need one there, correct? But in the future, it should could be there.
Your your comprehensive plan and your general plan for the city say that you you that we want to promote pedestrian traffic.
I understand. So from a I guess from a from your perspective, is there an alternative street or road or private drive that would be applicable? That would not have a sidewalk, you know, a necessary sidewalk so that we don't have to put a sidewalk for five houses?
Well, it's Perry Public Works. I would say that you got to have some kind of turnaround for the public. I know right now there's no turnaround. You know, you go in there and you're going to have to garbage truck is going to have to back out of there, fire trucks going to have to back. So they need to put in some kind of a turnaround, needs to be a cul-de-sac. You'd only put in, I guess, the T turnaround if you had terrain problems. So, you know, you're going to have some kind of a cul-de-sac and that the street cross section that was chosen would would meet the requirements. And like like you said, in the in the subdivision regs for that local street cross section, you got to have sidewalks on both sides.
Except in the cul-de-sac.
Except in the cul-de-sac.
Now, what's the rationale and why you wouldn't need it in the cul-de-sac?
I says typically the way we've been doing business, kind of, we feel like, hey, there's not really a whole lot of traffic back in there on the bulb itself. They can have access to the sidewalks on either side.
So there's going to be a lot of traffic for two houses to get to the sidewalk? I mean, that's what's going to be built, three houses total.
Right, right.
So from a from a from your perspective, why wasn't there a sidewalk when the road was improved on the opposite side of the street of Green Line?
That I don't know, yeah, that's that was built a while back, so.
I think.
Someone has for variance.
Huh?
Someone has for variance.
Jamie, let me make comment. I don't have a problem with the design or anything, but I am concerned about, thank you, the setting a precedent of granting variances without an in lieu payment. That's my my only point.
Gotcha.
I can I want to help any developer develop his land, but I don't want to create a precedent that's going to haunt us in the future when people come along and say, oh, give us a variance, no sidewalk, okay? If you can explain that rationale for me, that would be helpful.
Yeah, and I think that was a zoning issue.
And I agree with you.
Right now, the fee and lieu option pertains to the fee and as I explained earlier, the fee and lieu option pertains to developments that it's a zoning code issue. It's a it's it's a the fee and lieu is in the zoning code. So if you when you when you build a when you build a new building, like a commercial building, an industrial building, something along those lines, when you the zoning code requires the developer of that property to put a sidewalk on that portion of their property. If they don't meet that if they do not want to build that sidewalk and if they meet specific criteria for the fee and lieu, then they can pay a fee and avoid but that is that is for a zoning code issue. That's if if you wanted to go build a, you know, a commercial development somewhere within the city and you had a lot, you would be required to build a sidewalk if it was already built.
It also relates to residential zones.
Right, well, we the 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 it with multifamily, typically single family, it does not that zoning code requirement. Right, I can pull the zoning code out and we can read that entire section. But what we're the fee and lieu does not apply to the subdivision regulations with what we're dealing with here.
You're saying for residential, but we're enforcing it for other subdivisions constantly.
We're enforcing we're enforcing these cross sections when they're developing with when you're when you're talking about the subdivisions that you've heard where you're where you're we're building sidewalks and past meetings and approving plats and that sort of thing, we're in an active subdivision and we're being governed by the subdivision regulations at that point. So with the subdivision regulations, you these profiles come in and these profiles require the require the sidewalks.
Now, what makes this different? What makes this not a subdivision regulation application?
This is a subdivision. This is a subdivision regulation application. This this is this is a subdivision plat. This is a preliminary plat for a subdivision.
Tell me how that how we can not do an in lieu payment requirement.
You'd have to change the subdivision regulations to require a fee and lieu.
Allowed.
For for this particular situation.
By a variance or by what?
By you all changing the subdivision.
We have to change our rules.
A text amendment, a text amendment.
Is it fair to say a fee and lieu is not allowed under the subdivision?
A fee and a fee and lieu, that's that's correct. A fee and lieu is you either grant a variance or you don't. You either grant a variance or you don't. And if you grant a variance, then speaking to a lot of past variances that have been granted, probably for a long time in the city, going back throughout the years, just just I can't speak to what criteria that they those may or may not have met. But but again, the criteria for granting a variance where any provision would would cause unnecessary hardship or because of topographical or conditions peculiar to the site, which in the opinion of the city engineer would restrict the public interest, health, safety, or welfare. I don't, in my opinion, that the requirement to build a sidewalk does not constitute a hardship or have anything to do with the topography of this.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder.
I still have another question, Mr. Ryder.
Yes, ma'am.
Madison Way subdivision is going to be three new homes, five new homes. So it is a standalone subdivision, is that correct? It's not really a part of Town Acres, although you get to it through Town Acres?
Yes. It's a it's 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 own it's I mean, it's going to tie into this existing subdivision.
Okay, but on its own, is there is there a minimum number of homes that make it qualify as a subdivision?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
So act of subdivision is splitting, you know, splitting into anything great, you know, splitting a lot into two lots or more.
So right now, Mr. Berry's options are build two short sidewalks on either side of the road, coming out of the cul-de-sac up to the point of where it's no longer their property. Or to extend one down the left side coming out all the way to the corner.
No. And or or you grant a variance.
Or not.
And you allow them and you allow them to build no sidewalks.
But we're we're granting a variance. What are how do we what is the mechanism that triggers building the sidewalk there? When we say, okay, we're just going to take it from this side of the road and apply it to this other?
Sidewalks, the sidewalks are required.
I I get that.
The sidewalks are required. So we're proposing a method, we're proposing a method.
Tell me how that method legally is it possible to do that without a variance? That's my question.
You'd have to grant a variance to the.
To build on the the improvement side.
To to allow the sidewalk to be built further along one side of the street instead of two short sections on both sides.
Would the run of the sidewalk on the left?
And you know what? Maybe that's the best thing to do. The best thing made, I mean, the more I think through this process, it may make sense to grant no variance, to do what the side to do what the do what the sub regs require and and build the sidewalk on both sides of the street. And because this side section of sidewalk is being built here, then perhaps Public Works would be inclined to extend that sidewalk from here to here and do the connection for them.
You see where it gets challenging? So I'm just going to make a statement, not a motion, it was just a statement. As we look as we try to encourage infield into the city, we got to look at the characteristics of the current neighborhoods. And then how do they apply to our current subdivision regs? Because they've changed over the last 20 years since this subdivision has been built. Would we all agree to that? So I don't know how we do it. Hi, Whitney. I don't know how we do it, but we need to start if we're going to look at infield, we need to somehow adapt our policies to the characteristic of the current neighborhood. Because we can always say, well, could be could be in the future. But that's been there for 30 years and we have sidewalks to nowhere. And this is going to be another example of a sidewalk to nowhere.
I would disagree that it's a sidewalk to nowhere.
If he does it on the subdivision regulations, it's a sidewalk to nowhere.
But the sidewalks to nowhere, it's it the subdivision regulations, we realize the idea of the idea in writing the sub regs, the way they were written, is that what appears to be a sidewalk to nowhere could be a sidewalk to somewhere because the sidewalk could one day be extended.
If that were the case, then the sidewalk would be on the other side of the street as well on Green Line.
Yeah. The other point I have is if you grant a variance, there needs to be a rationale like the topography. Is there a problem with topography in building this? Okay, are there any other excuses?
Not in staff's not in staff's opinion. This is a this is a this is a a pretty flat area from from here to here.
Is there any other reason why it couldn't be built?
Will, thank you. You're doing you're fine.
Sorry, I'm Wallace McCullough, the city engineer. So the rationale to me to switch it to switch sides on it is that as Public Works, we could go out there and build that sidewalk to make the connection.
And that makes sense.
And it wouldn't make sense. But in instead of us doing it, we're allowing him to build it on on one side so it all connects. And so the responsibility on the opposite side of the street, if we come back, would be on Public Works to build that sidewalk.
It all makes sense. It really does. It's but it in characteristic of the current neighborhood, it does it make sense. I agree with everything you're saying.
Let me ask a real kind of technical question. The additional run on that one side, so he's he's going to have, I don't know what the what's the footage of the what he's required to do, the two short runs?
Hundred twenty-five feet, hundred twenty-five feet.
Seventy feet, okay.
About a hundred and fifty feet, if I remember correctly.
On one side.
On the two sides.
So about seventy some on each little run. The portion you're saying you can switch and go to the other side, how long is that run?
It's actually a little longer.
Okay.
It's a fair point. It's about a hundred and eighty feet. And if we wanted to make it, if you wanted to do an exact exchange of footage, that was something that, you know, we would have that they didn't point that out that that was an issue when they presented this plan.
It's going to cost them a lot more.
But if you want to make it an equal amount of footage, then that would probably connect it from here. We would probably be fine connecting the sidewalk from here to the property line going into the development, as long as it connects that development. If you want, we can we can certainly, if you were more comfortable with that variance request, that if it was an even amount of sidewalk here and here and 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 do that footage starting at Green Line on up to the.
I don't think it's fair to ask them to do more than what they're required to do. I mean.
And we could figure out that length and just make it that lengths, you know, that he whatever's required on both sides, we just get them to do that length on one side.
And then just stop there and then a big gap so it wouldn't attach to the sidewalk up on Green Line at all?
No, we'd make it we'd make it attach to the the existing sidewalk and then stop it, you know, if it's a hundred and.
In the middle of the other lot?
I don't think it would be in the middle of the other lot. I think it would get to the property line. It's about a hundred and fifty feet, so it has to be required.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Could you could we go ahead, Will, to go ahead and state the variance again? I want to make sure I'm clear on what what we're asking.
The variance that the staff is suggesting.
The variance, the variance that was again, staff, yes, staff supported variance, but we would support the variance that we just that we just meant. But but the variance as presented and portrayed on this particular plat that they presented would be to extend to extend the sidewalk from Green Line Drive to the property line separating lot one and lot two of the subdivision.
Okay. So you're going to have some sidewalk that's potentially usable, but not all the sidewalks that are required. Is that right?
I'm sorry, can you say?
You have some some sidewalk that is going to be usable for that subdivision, but not on both sides of the street and not necessarily what's. on both sides of the street and not necessarily what's required.
Correct.
I'm just trying to rationalize why we don't have an in lieu payment.
Okay.
You understand?
That, I, I do understand that.
Yep. That, that come to haunt us in the future.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions or discussion?
I think the developer has it.
I'll open the public comment again if you'll come to the podium, please.
We would be, I mean, again, going back to the comment of the in lieu, cause we do feel, I mean, the developers, myself, and I'm speaking for the other two gentlemen, we're both city residents, all three city residents and are highly encouraging of, uh, foot traffic, thoroughfare, thoroughfares. We'd be, even though it may not be a requirement that you may not be able to put on us, we would be willing to consider a in lieu payment to where you could put the funds to use at a place that might be more usable than the five houses that we're going to construct.
That's the whole idea behind an in lieu payment procedure.
I agree. And so, and I'm not, again, I don't wanna portray that it, that we're necessarily against it. We just, from a common sense standpoint, we, we don't feel like that there's gonna be quite enough foot traffic to require. I, I think if you put them on both sides, it will be a sidewalk to grass. If you put it on just the one side, is there really enough foot traffic there to, if you go back to that?
It never reaches your subdivision.
We're going out of, out of our subdivision. And there is, I agree, there is a sidewalk, and I, I'm getting older every day. That is a steep hill, uh, going up, which is now the real estate company, it used to be a Mexican restaurant. There's not a whole lot of foot traffic that's happening up and down that street. And so I agree, I, I, I mean, and there could be potentially sidewalks in Town Acres. If that happens, I'd probably come and argue that there's probably a better use for city money than that. However, there could be. We feel like it's, it, it's not as much, I'm not saying that we're made of money, it's not as much of a money thing, it's more of a aesthetic thing. And, Mr. Polich, I appreciate, appreciate what you're saying. I encourage and I want to do more infield projects like this. I think it's beneficial to the city. And so, you know, if, if the whole neighborhood, if I came up here and every street on that nap, on that picture had sidewalks, then I, I wouldn't have much of an argument to make. And I fully agree with that. So, um, even though it's not a requirement per the, and I don't know all the laws with the BZA and all that, we would consider that, an in lieu payment to where the funds could be used towards, cause we're not talk, I mean, I'm not, it's not significant amount of money. It, it's more of the aesthetics, in, in our opinion.
And Mr. Berry, so your preference would be to do it in lieu payment if you had your druthers based off of the variances and the sidewalks?
My druthers, my druthers would be no payments at all, but if I had to do one of the options, if that was off the table, I would say, I, we would prefer to do an in lieu payment. And I speak for myself, Greg Cox and Grant Summers in that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Holt?
Final question to Mr. Berry before he sits down. If you don't get a variance, then you're gonna have to put in some, some form of a sidewalk.
Yes, ma'am.
Is your preference the two smaller short runs or the one all the way to the corner?
I think the two short ones are, are a mistake. I think that's the sidewalk to nowhere. You've got a kid that's riding, riding a bike and he's gonna ride a bike and hit grass. You've got somebody that's looking on a phone and not paying attention, they're gonna trip on grass. I, I think that might, that, that is the mistake.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Ms. Holt?
So part of my job is to make sure that we are sticking to what we can and cannot do. And so as a subdivision, part of the subdivision regulations is that we as a city have entered into arrangement and said, you can subdivide under these rules. And so the fee in lieu that you're talking about, that comes a lot of times when you are changing the zoning. So we have used it recently on Austin Springs Road, when there was a zoning change and there was single-family housing and they needed to put sidewalk along that road. And that's one of the reasons why the fee in lieu option is there. So if the fee in lieu option is not on the table for a subdivision because we have set in and said, these are the rules of which you will develop in. And until, and I would say that going down that path might be a slippery slope for a subdivision, more so than a rezoning, because there is an exchange usually of some type of development, give and take. So, just wanted to make sure that, as we were talking about that, that yes, we do get into, um, that the zoning does apply to this, but only in the way is, are you meeting the requirements? So the, the fee in lieu requirement, that has passed, and it passed some time ago when the, when it was zoned. So I just wanna make sure that that is clear.
Good, thank you. All right, Eddie?
I'm struggling with the, I'm struggling with the sidewalk at, at all, because the whole subdivision doesn't have them. And I think from an aesthetic look, it, does it make sense to have two stubs going nowhere? I mean, I, I don't, I don't know. I have a hard time with that.
I'm gonna close, any other public comment, Mr. Berry, anything else?
The challenge, I.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna close public comment. Go ahead, Jamie.
I agree with, I agree, but the challenge is, is we have rules. And within ours, like as Whitney pointed out, and I've, in all honesty, I've tried to exhaust every possibility, way I could think of exhausting it. What we're gonna end up with is, uh, Mr. Berry and his business partners are gonna build a sidewalk that's never gonna reach their subdivision. I mean, if, is that about the case?
Well, can I, can we not do the variance?
How is it, I mean, a hundred and fifty feet?
If we, if we do, if we do a hundred and fifty feet, I believe you're looking at a sidewalk at least to this property line here.
Yeah, which isn't his.
Which is, which is, which is, gets him to the subdivision. Which does the subdivision.
I understand. Thank you.
All right, can I?
Then he would have no sidewalk in his subdivision up to the cul-de-sac.
Wherever that hundred and fifty feet stops. Now, if that, if that, if that hundred and fifty feet or whatever it turns out to be, and, and I'm sure Mr. Ellis can get that prepared on the plat to show what that would be, but if it, but if it crosses that property line and goes into the subdivision and cuts off in that property, it, it would make more sense just to stop it at the property line.
I agree.
Than have that sort of mess.
Can we issue a variance? No? This is.
Oh, I mean.
We don't, we don't, we're not gonna put the two stubs up?
Well, that's what I don't understand. We're, we're, we can issue a variance, but we're offering a variance by moving the road, the sidewalk from one side to the other. You know, I, I, the whole sidewalk, I've been on this board for nine years and that's been one of my soapbox issues is the sidewalk. So it's no fault of anyone in this room, but it is an issue.
Is it?
Yeah.
Let me just ask, and when this gets to the city commission?
This, this won't go to the city commission.
This won't go, so it's right here. It's gotta be beside.
This, this won't go to the city commission.
So from a, from what? My, the only other, I mean, I, I guess there's another issue with the name change. Because, Mr. Berry, the, the plat has the old name on it, we would be approving that particular name, this, I can't pronounce it.
If, if, if we, based on whatever, you know, if, if what I stated is facts or not, that, they have to come back, we would go from preliminary to construction plans and then we would come back for final plat. We, we could relook the name.
Okay.
Then, but there are requirements by our GIS department of what that name, it, it, it can't, part of the name, I'm, I'm speaking for GIS to be better if they were here, but part of that name, whatever they're naming the street, should not have be, have another street in the city somewhere that's, that's got that same name. And I, I think we have maybe a Madison somewhere else in the city. So changing it, there, there's, there are different rules with GIS with what you can change it to. But it's a preliminary plat, you can grant the, you can, you can, you can do the, the variance tonight, but as far as the, eh, eh, name change, if something is different and there is no moratorium, then we can, we can change the name on final plat.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
What, what is the length of the process for the street to be accepted by the city?
Until they build it, when they, I mean, they, they get, they, they get their construction, uh, they get their construction plans, once they get the preliminary plat, then they can get their construction plans approved. That, that can go on for an indefinite period of time, but they're vested for, uh, three years with some other regulations that allow vesting to continue for five and up to 15 years. But, um, you know, as long as they keep their permits, uh, active and they've applied for them and they're doing continual work on the property, then that street construction can go all the way up till final plat, and that can be an indefinite period, uh, number of years down the road, as, as long as they keep their requirements for vesting. So it could be sometime.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
This probably might be for Whitney. At the risk of beating this horse to death, uh, so we're, we're, we can make a variance, right? We're making exception to our rules about sidewalks, right? That's what a variance is. It's making an exception to the rules we've created. Can we also not do the same thing with a, in lieu of payments?
No. And let me, let me try to read something, a different, a whole different document.
Okay.
This is, this is, the, the subdivision regulations, which we've talked about at length tonight, have these road cross-sections in them. The fee in lieu comes in, in the zoning code under sidewalk regulations. And it states sidewalk shall be required as specified by the following. Sidewalks shall be constructed along our collector and arterial public streets. Sidewalks shall be constructed whenever a new principal building is built or an existing principal building is renovated or expanded sufficiently to increase its value by 25% before a certificate of occupancy may be issued. So all developments that do not trigger the subdivision regulations have to build a sidewalk when they build a new principal structure. So complete, no, no subdivision thing. Right under that, you could end up fee in lieu. Under the following circumstances, exceptions to required construction sidewalks, optional fee in lieu of construction. For required sidewalks under the section that I just read, the developer may choose to pay a fee in lieu of construction, except when one of the following circumstances exist. By the way, one of those, so forget the subdivision regulation, but if they were just building a new structure out in town, they would be required to build a sidewalk. They could pay a fee in lieu if it met all these requirements, one of which is within a thousand feet of an existing sidewalk. So if it's within a thousand feet of an existing sidewalk, even with the fee in lieu option under the zoning code, they would, they would not be able to do the fee in lieu. And there's some other things about being so many feet within front of a, within a, within a bus stop or, or, you know, other, other things. And it can't be a particular type, would generate a lot of pedestrian traffic. But what variance you grant, if you want to grant a variance, if you want to, whatever the option is, or if you want to grant the variance to build no sidewalks, that's certainly within your jurisdiction. It's just staff's recommendation that you would tie it to one of the conditions that would grant a variance.
I'm just curious, this is really not important, but on the name change, on the name, if, if, does it have to be, like, there's a Madison Court in Johnson City. So would that make a difference if it's Madison Court versus Madison Way?
I'm not the name-changing expert, but from my conversations with Ann Howland of our GIS department, if there's a, if there is a Madison Court, then a Madison Way would not be approved by 911 and by GIS. But that's something that we would have to get into with, if, if we go that, we go that route. And, and, and I think, as a matter of fact, on that application, I think that was one of Ms. Howland's comments, was that there was already a Madison somewhere within the city. But, but those are all things that would be looked at by the respective departments when they, when they review plats.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
So, I think I'm, I'm gonna make a statement and then make a motion. That's okay?
Please.
Mr. Berry, I think in a way you're gonna get what you want, in some degree, you're gonna get the pay in lieu, but it's, I don't think, based on the, the length of the sidewalk that we're asking you to construct, will ever reach your subdivision. So, the, the dollars that you're spending are technically in lieu because it will never reach your subdivision to build a sidewalk. And I apologize for that, cause I, I don't think it's correct or right, but it is the way it is. So with, with that being said, I'll make a motion that we accept the staff recommendation as written and grant the planning commission approve the Madison Way subdivision preliminary plat, to approve the modified, and is that correct? Modified is the right word for variance?
Modified local, approve the modified local residential street profile variance request.
Request to grant permission for the property owner to cross the control strip at the end of Red Cindy Avenue. I'm gonna add a caveat to that. The length of the sidewalk can no, cannot exceed the length that he had to originally construct. And if it ends in the middle of the lot, then it reverts back to the previous lot, so that there's not gonna be an inconsistent sidewalk based on lot size. Clear as mud?
Well, Jamie, my, my only question with that is, my only question is that, what if Mr. Berry wants to spend the extra money and just make it all the way in? Like, that would allow, not allow him to do that, if you want to extend the sidewalk from green line all the way to a subdivision? If you put that caveat in there, does it make sense?
Um, I'm gonna stick with my motion because I don't think he's gonna construct anything more than he has to construct. Would that be fair to say?
If the requirement is, um, my business. Yes, please, go ahead. If you'll come to the podium, please.
I'd like to separate the motion out.
I withdraw my motion.
And have the variance motion standalone.
So, can I make a motion then?
Yeah.
If you don't have one?
I mean, well.
I, I withdraw my motion.
I don't wanna take it away.
So staff recommends or recommend the approval of Madison Way subdivision preliminary plat with a modified local residential street profile variance request and to grant permission to property owners to cross the control strip at the end of Red C D.
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion of the motion, do we understand the motion? Do you have the motion recorded?
Yeah, it was a little fast.
It's, it's what's written, right?
It's what's written.
Oh, so is it staff approved?
It's a staff approval.
You know what, I, if I may, and it's, it's a great motion, but if I may, I think maybe in this particular case, since, since he stated he would be agreeable to, I, I was trying to look here to see if I can figure out the exact measurement from here to here, but if he is agreeable to, and if that's what you're, you're, you're leaning towards granting a variance request on one side of the street and no one wants to see it stop in the middle, then I, I think maybe I might recommend that you, you do the motion to grant approval of the, uh, approval of the modif, approval of the Madison Way subdivision preliminary plat and to approve the modified local residential street profile variance request extending the sidewalk from Green Line Drive to the property to, uh, to the, property line, uh.
To the beginning of his property.
The eastern, the eastern property line of lot one.
I could be confused.
Or something along those lines.
Isn't that what I said?
So that, that way, well, you know, you said to present it as is, as it, but I'm just trying, I'm just trying to think of a way to do in the motion that would, that would expressly state that it's connecting from here to this property.
Maybe it would be easier for him to do it from his property line up and then let
the city finish the rest of it.
Well, let's, let's make a decision about the requested.
That's what I would recommend.
City can't.
We got a motion on the floor?
What did Jamie say?
I withdrew my motion.
Why aren't we doing the sidewalk? I mean, that's what I don't understand. I don't get it.
I think Mr. Whitfield's motion was to grant the variance request extending the sidewalk from, from here to the subdivision.
Green line to the, yes.
To the, to the property line.
Show me again, Will, where?
What's that, what's that house address?
From the sidewalk, from here.
All the way to the property line.
To the property line.
But he's having to, to build more than, right? Than what he would normally have to build.
That is correct.
That's his push.
Maybe, maybe not. We don't have the exact measurement from the corner of that sidewalk to that property.
But Afkin said he's amendable to it. Is it fair? Afkin said he was amendable to it? Is it fair? No. No.
All right, we've got a motion and a second on the floor.
I, I'm sorry, I'm gonna withdraw my second because I really wanted to have the variance as a standalone so we can vote on that. And we vote on the preliminary plat and the owner to cross the control strip at the end of Red Cindy Avenue. And then we take up the variance as a separate standalone. The sidewalk varian. My, my concern about what's being talked about right here is that we're, we're throwing around, um, putting the sidewalk in that, um, you know, he's either gonna have gaps at one end of it or doesn't, barely reaches his subdivision. And, I mean, it just makes sense.
All right. Commissioner Whitfield, would you like to modify your motion or withdraw?
Well, neither. So, uh, I'm gonna let it stand, only because, so the applicant stated that he was willing to build the sidewalk from Green, Green Line to the property line. And we don't know how much further that is, if it's further at all.
Well, he doesn't even know the length of it right now, yeah.
All right, we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Correct. To your property line.
Nicole, is there?
So we all are in agreement. It makes no sense, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
But I am concerned about a variance going down a slippery slope.
Is there, is there a, is there a process where they can vote on this later in the evening so I can go down to the office and measure the exact width of that property line?
That really has nothing to do with it for me.
Oh.
Let's, let's go ahead.
But to answer your question, i- if you table any item, it will automatically go to the end of the meeting, just for future thoughts and references.
Any questions we'd like to have?
I'm seconding Whitfield's motion.
You're seconding Whitfield's motion? Thank you. All right, further discussion of the motion. Nicole, can you repeat the motion, please? The motion is the, uh, pro, recommendation, recommendation of, uh, proposal by the staff? Is that correct?
Correct. The staff recommended variance that would connect Green Line to the applicant's property line.
So what I have is a motion to approve as presented by staff with the variance extending sidewalk from Green Line Drive to the eastern property line of Lot One.
Can I, can my laptop?
Yes.
What, what I'm struggling with is, are we, are we approving this plat for the subdivision? And then we're also, including in that is the sidewalk?
Yes, that's the motion.
And I'm with Jenny. I, I think that it needs to be separate because I'm, I'm good with the subdivision. I'm not good with the sidewalk.
Okay.
So we do have a motion and a second, so I will need to do a vote. If that's all right, Mr. Chairman.
Any other, any other discussion before we vote?
But if you're approving the preliminary plat as it is, you're approving it with the sidewalk going all the way to this property line here. So if you approve the preliminary plat without the variance request, um, then you're approving, you, you can't approve this plat as is. If you don't like the, if you don't like the sidewalk going all the way to here, uh, then.
If we vote it, Dan, can we bring it up?
Your, your approval of the preliminary plat would be as it's presented here from here to here.
So what if we don't, what if the plat does not get approved? What happens then?
Then we have, uh, 65 days to act on it. Um, you need to state that, you, you all, you've got a motion on the floor. You got a motion on the floor, so, and you've got a second, so, um, you'll either vote on it and approve it or you don't approve it. And then if the motion fails, then you all have to continue to talk a little bit more and come up with another motion. And if at some point during the night you all vote to deny the, deny the preliminary, to deny the preliminary plat and, and then not approve it, then you have to state why you're not approving it. And we've got, uh, otherwise, within 65 days, it gets approved.
And I guess, if I'm understanding this correctly, we can't really vote on it without, like, so do you want to just approve of the plat itself? But I don't think we can pull the sidewalks out of it. If you approve the preliminary plat, you have to vote on the sidewalk. That's saying, keeping the sidewalks as submitted.
There is only, yeah.
So either way, we have to make a decision on the sidewalks.
All right.
Could, could, could the applicant come back later to the planning commission and, and appeal and ask for a variance again?
Yes.
Just the variance?
At the final plat stage, yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay.
All right.
And the applicant could come back with another idea that they may find more amendable to it, and we can make the change then.
Do they have to pay another fee to do that?
Well, you're, uh, we, we would have to, no, I don't think we would charge them. Preliminary, preliminary plat fees are based off of the number of lots. And we don't double charge people. When they come back in for a final plat, we don't charge them again for the same lots that we started to create and, uh, and preliminary. But, yeah, they would just have to come back in with a preliminary plat, a, a revision of the preliminary plat because we would need to get that approved in the preliminary plat before they go on with it. Because we'd have to, uh, approve the construction plans based off of whatever variance you might request.
So if I understand you correctly, the developer could come back for the final plat and ask for a variance from the variance?
Well, if he's, if he, if you issue a variance tonight, if you have, if, probably misspoken, I said final plat, if you issue a variance tonight for the preliminary plat, then they can start, then we can start reviewing construction plans when they submit them. So during that process, if they want, if they, if they want to pursue a variance of a different sort, then they would need to come back in with a revision to the preliminary plat to get preliminary plat approval.
But they can come back, is the, is the point?
Yes. Yeah, but they can come back, correct.
All right, final discussion before I call the question?
Well, um, interesting discussion tonight. Thank you, very lively. Um, I don't wanna hold this development up at all. But I think it does show some, some work that we probably need to do as a city to look at some of the subdivision regulations. I think Jamie brought up a very good point about the, you know, the, the, the nature of the subdivision and, and, um, you know, I don't know how many other sidewalks are in Town Acres. Uh, is the one up by the funeral home the only one? Are there others that exist around there? There may be some around the school, I don't know. But certainly, it, it certainly, um, you know, when, when we look at kinda common sense and, and appearance and those kinda things, um, it's, it's, it's hard to kinda rationalize a lot of the, a lot of this. So, but I, I want you to be able to move forward now. Clearly, the red circle is what the city, it's the city's recommendation. And, Mr. Berry, you know, I'm not still quite sure that you've agreed to this, that's what you wanna do. Or you can come back and seek a variance just to do two short stubs, at least so they're in your subdivision. So, um, it's kinda been the confusion for me a little bit, and I'm easy to get confused.
Yeah, I think Dr. Whitfield's motion, I think it, it, it's shrinking that red circle from here to here instead of all the way down.
Yeah, it doesn't get to a subdivision.
Say that again.
It's shrinking the circle. Look, Mr., Dr. Whitfield's motion would be to the sidewalk from here to the property line entering the subdivision, not all the way through this first lot.
So it's not even gonna go to?
It doesn't touch a subdivision.
It's going to touch, it's going to connect the subdivision to the property line. That was what the whole discussion about the equal amount of feet based on what they required was a concern.
You kinda got what you wanted.
Ms. Lawrence, would you call the roll, please?
I will.
Does the property, do we have to inform the property owner that the sidewalk's going in front of?
Do I need to repeat the motion?
Please.
Yes.
Okay. The motion is to approve as presented by staff with the variance extending the sidewalk from Green Line Drive to the eastern property line of Lot Number One.
All right, thank you.
Got it, okay. Commissioner Aldridge. Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Brock?
I'm gonna go ahead and vote yes, I don't wanna slow him up, so.
Commissioner Pavlich?
Yes.
Commissioner Rhodey?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Whitfield?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes.
Motion approved.
I apologize.
I apologize also, Mr. Berry.
Yeah. Crazy.
All right, thank you very much for the patience, Mr. Ryder. Thank you very much for the patience.
Control strip.
Uh, we have a control strip question. We have one more topic on this before we can leave it. Access to the property across the control strip. Does it, do, do we need to discuss that? Do you know what I'm talking about? The city controls a five-foot wide band at the end of the stubbed-out street that we have to give permission for him to cross. Is that correct, Mr. Ryder?
That's correct. Make a motion to approve the control.
Second. Any discussion? Nicole, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Pavlich?
Yes.
Commissioner Rhodey?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Whitfield?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Well, you did a good job.
Will, thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Peyton, please help us.
Take it easy.
Do we need to take a break? I think not. Let's, let's proceed. Let's proceed, please.
Proceed, okay. Good evening again, everybody. In front of you, I have a Washington County rezoning at 850 Boone Station Road. They are requesting to go from PMD, which is the Planned Manufacturing District, to B3, which is a general business district. So this right here is the property. You can see it is touching the city. And I know that we've had some annexations come through, so I just, I just wanna clarify that this is in the county. It is staying in the county, but because it is in our planning region, it has to come through us. And you are gonna be the recommending body to the Washington County Board of Commissioners. This is the concept plan. They plan on building a new warehouse building. It does meet all of the Washington County requirements, and the future land use map does suggest that this area is supposed to be commercial. And it is surrounded, as you can see right here, it is surrounded by the city's B4. So it is really in character for the area. Their B3 is, is very similar to our B4. This is the area. This is the site. This is the road going out there. The neighborhood meeting was handled by Washington County. As of this morning, Washington County reported that they have not received any public input on this, and staff recommends approval.
Very good, thank you. Any conversation or questions for staff? I'll open the floor for public comment. Is anyone here to speak to the issue? Sir, please come forward. If you'll please give your name and address.
Thank you. I'm Michael Cannon. I reside at 910 Micaiah Drive in Johnson City, and I work for Mitch Cox Companies. Uh, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff or for Mr., our guest here this evening? I thank you very much. I'm gonna close the floor for public comment. Any discussion? Questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve and second, the rezoning of this property. Ms. Nicole, would you, uh, refresh us on the motion?
Uh, yeah. Motion is to approve as presented to request to the Washington County Commission approval.
All right, thank you. Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Pavlich?
Yes.
Commissioner Rhodey?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Whitfield?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, I believe, I thought we had a final plat, one last item that was added to the agenda. We've lost Mr. Ryder. If you don't mind holding just a moment, please.
I thought Aaron was gonna come down.
Probably next one. He's gonna, he wants to spend some time with us. Chris.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ryder, do you have a topic for us, the last item, please?
Were you, were you hearing?
Thank you very much. This is the final plat, if I understand correctly?
That's correct. This is the plat that we approved at the, uh, at the meeting. This is Villas at Knob Creek Phase Two located at the intersection of Garanda Drive and Knob Creek. This is a 10, 10-unit residential development. Um, it's zoned RP3 with a max density of 8.5 units per acre. And the bottom line is that, that, the 10 units is well within what's permitted by , uh, density. Um, this is a project that has been in the works for quite some time, going back, I, I believe as far back as possibly 2006, where there have been different owners involved and, uh, different staff reviewers and, and that sort of thing. Um, the property is accessed through Phase One of the Villas at Knob Creek through a shared permanent access easement, which is, which is perfectly acceptable if you're crossing, only crossing from one lot into the, the neighboring lot. So this, the construction plans have been approved years ago. Uh, permits have been maintained. Um, houses, housing, or, uh, houses have been, they've begun constructing houses on this particular piece of property. Um, and they're, uh, in here seeking final plat approval. Uh, so here, there are a couple of things that we need to, need to call out that are, uh, a- a- again, we don't want to hold up developers and we want developers to be able to make this as expedient as, as possible, which was, uh, uh, one of the reasons why we, we, we presented this on the, the agenda, uh, obviously past the deadline. There's a sidewalk that will be constructed, uh, per the construction plans connecting Knob Creek Road to, uh, uh, Phase One. Phase One sidewalk ends here at the property liner, just past it. So there is a sidewalk involved. That sidewalk's not been involved. There's a bond, uh, associated with this particular plat. There's also landscaping, uh, that was, uh, that, that, um, the developer has posted a, a bond for. And, um, this particular house, there's a 3.4-foot encroachment into the Bright Ridge easement, the transmission line easement. Uh, this is, this is not an encroachment that, that violates our subdivision regulations or our zoning code per se, but it's something that since it went into Bright, Bright Ridge, I, I had the developer contact Bright Ridge and, and, and to speak to them about this. Um, Bright Ridge, Mark Eads at the, at Bright Ridge, uh, sent a letter, and we've added, and the developers added a note to the plat stating that there is an encroachment and that Bright Ridge has no issue with the 3.4-foot encroachment into the transmission line easement. Just highlighted that to make you aware of it in case you were looking at the plat. Obviously, it didn't come out into, in a packet that you would have, you have seen beforehand, but I just wanted to highlight that. We talked about the bond. There's an $18,100, uh, bond, uh, estimate for the sidewalk and, uh, an $18,750, uh, estimate for landscaping provided by our city forester for a total of, uh, $36,850. One other, one other point is the, the public water line. Obviously, the plats create easements. There is, uh, based on the ASBILTS, which Mr. Olinger from the Water and Sewer Department has reviewed and has no issues with the ASBILTS. Uh, but the ASBILTS, there is a slight discrepancy in the length and the width of this water line easement, uh, with how it matches up with the ASBILTS. Uh, it would be perfectly acceptable if you, uh, would, would choose to do so to grant approval of the Villas at Knob Creek Phase Two final plat contingent upon the revision of the public water line easement to adequate width and length. That's just a correction matching the plat with the ASBILTS. Uh, and we would have that revision taken care of prior to the secretary coming in to sign the final plat. And, uh, as a separate motion, uh, to accept the $36,850 cash bond.
All right, questions for staff?
Mr. Ryder, they're already, they are constructing right now, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. They've, they've been in construction for some time. Construction plans were permitted a long time, years ago, and they've, they've been building and, yes.
So, and that's without final plat approval? Do we do that often?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yeah. It's a, it's a, it's a PUD development.
It's a, it's a, it's a PUD development. It's quite typical for houses to be built during that, during the construction phase prior to final plat approval.
What if we disapprove the final plat?
I think that there would, when you disapprove a plat, I think there's, there's almost a legal requirement to approve a final plat as long as it meets the regulations of our zoning code and subdivision regulations. There would have to be a compelling reason to disapprove the plat.
Ms. Hope? Could you come to the mic, please?
With, when it comes to your subdivision actions, they're quasi judicial proceedings. So if you did, if you did not want to approve a final plat, you have to state a reason why it doesn't meet part of the ordinance. So that's one of the things that you would need if that is your purview.
No, I'm just wondering why it wasn't brought before the planning commission before, when they got their permits and?
They're at the point that our plotting process goes, our plotting process goes from preliminary to construction plan approval to doing all, to getting those construction plan permits, to developing the site, to a point that our inspectors will go out and inspect the, and inspect the construction and they've either constructed it per the construction plans or they post bonds for unfinished work. So this is just the typical process of, of, before they can sell lots, though, they have to receive final plat approval. So it's, it's typical, I mean, this, this is the normal process of preliminary, construction plan approval, begin construction, complete construction, or bond construction that's not completed and then receive your final plat approval.
Thank you. All right, I'll open the floor for public comment. Is anyone here to speak to the question? Come forward, please, and if you'd please give us your name and address.
Scott Edwards, 408 Lake Breeze Drive. Yeah, we, we purchased this, you were talking about infield. We purchased this development to finish. Actually, I had 11. We removed the one to 10 that was approved. Anyway, I think it's pretty cut and dried. I think the great news is, is we have 400 and some feet of sidewalk. We're not arguing. We're going to put it in.
Thank you.
We're going to put it in. No, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you for building.
Thank you for developing our community. Thank you very much. Any other, any other comments from the public? I'll close the floor for public comment and ask for conversation amongst us. Is there any questions or discussion?
Mr. Ryder, is there two motions or three?
Two motions, I would think. Grant approval, grant approval if you choose to so of the, of the final plat contingent upon the revision of the public water line.
Okay. And then the bond?
And then to accept the cash bond. And hopefully I've made that easy to read there.
Oh, there it is.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion about the motion? Ms. Lawrence, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Pavlich?
Yes.
Commissioner Rhodey?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Whitfield?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Thank you, sir, for being patient.
Motion for the acceptance of the bond.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to accept the bond. I apologize. I thought we had to put those two motions together at the beginning. Would you please call the roll, Nicole?
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Pavlich?
Yes.
Commissioner Rhodey?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Whitfield?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Yes, thank you very much. So that takes care of that item, is that correct, Mr. Ryder? All right, is there anything else to come before the commission? All right, the meeting's adjourned.